Public hearing called to order, roll call please.
Public hearing.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamey.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farrar, Mayor Burton.
Public hearing is regarding ordinance 671, amending title of 14, section 14-204, 14-312, and 14-408 regarding temporary and non-residential accessory buildings. Anyone here to speak on behalf of ordinance 671? Okay, motion to close public hearing?
Right.
Second?
Second.
Regular meeting called to order, roll call please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamey.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farrar, Mayor Burton.
Okay, first item is approval of the agenda. Motion for that, please.
We approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This evening prayer will be given by Councilman Gann and afterwards we will do the pledge.
Our Father, we thank thee for the blessings that you've still upon us as we look around us and we see the beautiful weather that you've given us and we know that we live in a special place with special people. We pray especially tonight to enjoy our friend ET as he's back with us. We pray for others that need your guidance, your care, your comfort. We pray that you be with the people in the Ukraine as they continue their battle for their freedom and their democracy. Be with us as citizens of Clinton and we may seek to be the most democratic and the most outgoing and use the most wisdom in all that we do. For in thy name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Larry, and ET welcome. We are glad to have you here buddy. Good to see you. First item, review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated March 28, 2022. Motion to approve.
Salute.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is recognition of visitors and citizens. If there's anyone here in the audience that would wish to speak, you are welcome to do so at the podium, just give us your name and your address. Yes ma'am?
Dana Worthington.
Okay, if you will come to the podium. Thank you.
438 Eagle Bend Road. I have some files that you can leave.
Okay, yeah, sure.
I'm sorry that Mr. Mayor Burton isn't here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You see I don't know you but I sure hear a lot about you. I hear you.
She hears a lot about everybody.
Well, once again, I'm Dana Worthington. I live at 438 Eagle Bend Road. I'm grateful to be here today. Thank you for having me. I am so proud to live in this town and to have been blessed to run a successful small business here and raise my family here over the past 36 years. We have so many great new things happening right down the street from me on Market Street and that is a testament to the collaborative spirit of this council and its work with the citizens and businesses of Clinton for the health, safety, and well-being of our community. I wanted to thank Mayor Burton, Manager Howe, and Police Chief Becker for hearing me out on these issues over the past year and a half. I want to shout out a huge praise to the Public Works Department for always being so helpful and kind and answering any of all questions I have had and treating me with such respect. Please let me say thank you for the speed meter sign just near my driveway. It's a great first step in addressing the traffic issues near my home and I have seen a difference. I appreciate your respect and concern, but still I think more can be done in terms of traffic safety in the area between Weaver Street and the railroad tracks. Now this is Weaver Street to the tracks, not Weaver Street through Eagle Bend. Especially considering all this new growth coming to my little segment of Clinton. Again, this is for the health, safety, and well-being of all of our citizens, especially all of the young children and the aging population in this part of Clinton. At this time, I will share some concerns on behalf of our community, local citizens, taxpayers who expect and deserve safe streets for the safety and well-being of our community. The amount of traffic coming out up and down Eagle Bend Road is staggering. I have counted with my own camera technology, excuse me, up to 600 vehicles passing throughout the day. Large personal trucks, work trucks, trucks with trailers, smaller cars driving well over the speed limit. Next, large transfer trucks, 18-wheelers, are using my area and Market Street as a thoroughfare, including one that parks behind the old Hammers. I talked to one day, he said he works for the city and that he parks there and I have seen him park there, so that's twice a day he comes through. And I've seen him leave. This vehicle has prevented drivers from moving forward to the tight turn at Collum Street, which is basically a jackknife turn, and also some have been dragging the tracks with cars trailing behind. I have pictures and names of companies that are not permitted here. I have never known businesses on Market Street this small delicate street to need this much traffic. In the past, I have spoken to the Public Works Department about city trucks using Eagle Bend Road for convenience. Now this is the larger trucks when they have big loads to haul and they have relayed that this is a safety concern on their end. They cannot safely use the Boulevard. Even so, this needs to be addressed because this is an additional traffic that also causes safety concerns to the citizens on Eagle Bend. It is extremely important in the long term and necessary in the short term. Once again, the health, safety, and well-being of our citizens is at the heart here. I would like to request the following. A second electric speed meter sign on the other side near the Hammers Warehouse. The current speed limit sign is not even clearly visible, perhaps adding reflectors to the sign or sign poles. I ask that our trusted and loyal police department make a point to serve and protect us with speed detection. We used to have that and it's gone now. I don't know why. We absolutely need a speed hump, not to be like a speed bump that are on Eagle Bend where you have space in between, but a speed hump that takes the whole route from one side to the other with a lower level like the one on Market Street. That's something that something can be done at the three-way intersection of Weaver Street and Eagle Bend. Cars coming down Eagle Bend towards the tracks constantly swerve left to avoid traffic jutting out past the stop sign at Weaver Street. Swerving left is so dangerous. And this morning, taking my grandbaby home, one swerved onto me with a trailer on the back off of Eagle Bend going to Weaver. That was kind of scary. I witnessed near misses every day. And I also want to say that the same trucks that go past my house are the same trucks that go down Eagle Bend and they go past those humps too. I'm not talking about the huge big trucks or semi-trucks. I'm talking about work trucks, trucks with trailers, any kind of vehicle that goes past Weaver going down has to use those speed bumps, humps, whatever. So I don't see that there should be a problem with them coming on down. Every day at certain times is too dangerous. I have spoken to a local prominent engineer who says you can swerve all day without indication. So we need some indications. I have shared images with you that present possible solutions, including the idea of a three-way stop as well as other measures that could be taken to make traffic run more safely and smoothly at the Weaver Street and Eagle Bend intersection. Also, this isn't written, but where you go out of Eagle Bend, out of Weaver towards Market or if you go in coming, you know, from Eagle Bend to Weaver, those swerving curves need to be squared off. They just let you do it, which is like, I mean, it's like entices you to do that. And I think that that should be something, and I know an engineer would have to look at that. But like I said, I have spoken to a prominent engineer who says a three-way stop can be done. It is possible. If you look at the images number one through five, that is actually my car and I went up there the other day and did all of the different pulling outs. People do not stop at the stop sign because they can't see ahead, but the law is you stop at the crosswalk and then proceed forward. But we're ignoring the stop sign, just going forward, and so crossing over has been dangerous to me. In fact, I won't even take my child, my grandchild, across that. And I used to be able to walk all the time there. So if you look at the images number six through eight, which indicate the openness and the emptiness and the lack of signage going down from Weaver, it's just like a big open forum, just like, let's go. It's got so much speed availability and people love to come up from the tracks and as they go over the tracks, they enjoy that too. Please take a look at the pages number nine and 10, which offer ideas and data on speed humps and chicane's. I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce it. But finally, please take a look at the pages numbered 11A, 11B, and 11C, particularly the circled paragraph on 11A, which details the responsibility of the railroad. The railroad is responsible for 18 feet on either side of the end track. I went up and down all the railroad tracks, got out of my car with a tape measure and I measured it. So anything that needs to be done for stronger indication, bolder riding, something that just make it first of all, look better and possibly entice people to drive slower. Finally, I invite Mayor Burton and Manager Howe to set aside a weekday afternoon from 2:30 to 4:30, but now I'm wanting to say 5 to 5:30 because that was just crazy today. I mean, it was just one of the other, and they pass each other and they're loud and they're big and I just saw a transfer truck come up. It was a double truck and I won't name it here. But I would like to also speak in private with Manager Howe at his convenience. I spoke today out of concern for my friends and neighbors and again, the health, safety, and well-being of my fellow citizens of Clinton. I look forward to hearing your thoughts and will be glad to answer any clarifying questions you may have. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Manager Howe for Chief Becker, I mean, I know personally speeding is an issue not just on Eagle Bend, it's everywhere. More people driving in America today probably than ever because America's population is more than it ever has been. So therefore, we have probably more 16-year-olds than we've ever had. And speeding is a concern, but I know it's just not a concern. We hear a lot from Eagle Bend, I live on Eagle Bend, on out, and I know we hear a lot about Eagle Bend, but I'm sure speeding is an issue from one end of the city to the other. And I know that...
Excuse me, may I say something here? I'm not talking about where you live coming in.
No, I know, but let me have my turn. Let me have my turn. You had about 10...
I want to just make...
Yeah, you had about 10 minutes, so let me have my turn. Yeah, yeah, I wrote it down.
Okay.
Yeah, again, that's fine. So my point is, I mean, what have you all done to address this? I mean, I think you had the traffic count done, the speed humps have helped. Can we completely alleviate these problems? Probably not. But am I wrong or incorrect in saying we're maybe headed the right direction or we've had some accomplishment? Are you good to speak to that, Ian, one of you guys?
Yes, in fact, I can tell you, we did a survey using the speed and traffic sign at the same location going the same direction. And one was prior to the speed humps being put in in September and one was more recent after that. And from our data, it shows that the traffic count's down a little bit. The average speed now is 18 miles per hour passing that speed sign, and that's at Weaver at Eagle Bend. The top 15% of the speeders are doing 25 miles per hour now. In the past, it was an average speed of 22 miles per hour and the top 15% of the speeders were doing 31. So that's a pretty good indication that it's working, speed humps are, and so I think they're successful.
Okay. City Manager Howe, can you have any comment?
The only other thing I'd like to add was, of course, we'll be starting the tap grant projects later this summer. And of course, it doesn't go all the way to the railroad tracks or Eagle Bend. One of the reasons why, because the red tape that would get involved in dealing with the railroad having to cross it. But it will be adding from Commerce and Column on down, traffic calming features, which should help the whole area. It'll be narrowing the streets way down. There is some talk during, and we have looked at some traffic studies, our traffic engineer wasn't really up on the idea of making Weaver and Eagle Bend a three-way stop. We have looked at it and may consider it during construction just to slow traffic down even more. There are some ideas there that we've looked at, traffic islands, bringing the curb out. So there are some ideas. It's just right now, the first, our first step in looking at the traffic calming devices, we picked Eagle Bend and Riverside River Bend with the two speed humps. We did the survey on Eagle Bend, he's got the data there. We want to do the same thing on River Bend. We want to collect some data pretty soon before Riverside is opened back up under the bridge, so we can collect some data there. And so we can kind of make some educated determinations of where we'd want to put some additional traffic calming devices. We've got some same requests in Westwood Estates, so we'll be looking at that probably next. Harbor Drive, when we do the work over there, that's going to be a pretty straight, long road, probably need to be, we've already talked about that. So there's more than one area of concern. I know Ms. Worthington's concern is one area, but we have to look at the entire city, not just one. So there's several areas that we are looking at with her area being one of them.
Okay, good. Okay, yes ma'am?
Okay. Once again, we totally ignored what I just read, okay? I'm talking about from Weaver Street to the tracks. Now you all been talking about Riverside and River Bend and out where you live and speed bumps. That is great. I'm so proud of you. But if you could just see it, none of y'all probably really see it from 2:30 to 4:30 or to 5, but it is swerving and I know that, I've talked to people on Riverside, there's no way that there's that much traffic. It's just that it's a nicer neighborhood, it looks pretty. I'm in Warehouse Road, I've got a truck. There's three residential houses there and we are being totally ignored. We're not as lucky as the other Eagle Bend and Riverside River Bend, whatever you want to call it. This is an important issue and I think it needs to be taken care of soon.
Okay.
I mean, it's ridiculous. No street in Clinton, and I've been on all of them, I have done my investigation, there's no street coming down from Weaver or up from the tracks that has, today I counted 60 cars an hour from 8:30 to 10:30, 126. From 2:30 to 4:30, there's anyway from 250 to 300 cars. Now Westwood is a beautiful estate, you know, there might be some speeding there, but are there 300, 400, 600 cars there? I mean, it's kind of being ignored right now in front of y'all.
No, I don't think it's being ignored.
He's mentioned, excuse me, I'm not being rude or anything, but he's mentioned everything but what I've talked about.
No, I've missed that intersection too.
Yeah, but it's more than an intersection. It is like the thoroughfare from the plant, I mean, from the Boulevard. And it's from the plants too. But what you're not seeing is that we need a reason for people to slow down. There's no cars on earth that should be allowed. And I'm not arguing with Officer Becker because I know the data says what it says, but I stand there sometimes and I watch it. I mean, I just put a chair up there and sit and watch it. And most of it's 25 to 29. Now the only people that really slow down to the 18 mile are the ones that are turning on Weaver, that earway. We can't see it.
So what is the speed? The speed limit is 25, right?
Which one thing, just for information for council, Eagle Bend is classified a major collector as a road.
And who determined that? The state or traffic engineers or...
Plan and commission.
Oh, okay. And that's based on, I guess, the roads that feed into it, the roads that feed off of it? Where it starts, where it ends?
It doesn't want to go all the way down through Market Street. And here's another thing, they're gonna, whoever's, it doesn't matter who's driving. What matters is the amount of vehicles trying to pull out of your driveway. I'm five feet literally from desk. I can't even really work in my front yard without seeing speeding vehicles. And even if it's a thoroughfare and the planning commission, I wish I had been here or been to that meeting to know that it's okay for every truck on earth to come through there. I mean, there's, every truck that goes through the Eagle Bend Road with the speed bumps, why shouldn't they have to do that on our side?
Well, all I can say is the people that are here, and I mean, it's not that we don't, I mean, I can tell you myself and as a council member and as a citizen, it's not that there's not a concern there, but at the same time, we're limited as to what we can do. You can't go tell this, you can't, if I'm, can you police particular trucks and say, you can't drive on this road?
I'm not talking about the particular truck.
You've mentioned that several times.
I know, but I'm trying to let you know that we have a very big variety. What I'm asking for is some speed humps.
Okay.
And a better three-way. There are other things that you can do. And not to mention, when people swerve like they're going to the tracks, they get so close to the curb there and those chicane's that I sit on there, like y'all have down here coming into the, you know, there'll be, there's white lines, you turn like this and there's white lines going like that. That's so people won't just swerve. We have to do it in front of your building and we need to do it at our area.
Okay.
Because it's important.
Okay.
And so what's going to be the end result for me? Am I going to hear from somebody? Are we going to take a vote? Are we going to, show me a plan? Or are we just going to let it go until it just keeps going?
What can we do? I mean...
And why don't we have laser, why don't we have, is that what it's called? Radar? We just have a police officer that sits on there every morning.
But we just had a report that the speed limit, I mean, they're measuring the speed limit with that sign.
Yes, but we don't have anybody down there to put, we need to put the fear into people.
Okay. Well, this topic is going, usually it's three minutes, public comment, and we've gone...
Okay, well, this is an important topic about the health, safety, and well-being of Clinton.
Okay.
And where I live and where people come through. And once again, I would like to have somebody come and watch it and see it, or I can make a video, I can have somebody make a video presentation.
Okay.
And bring it. This is important.
Okay.
Three minutes or not.
Okay.
It's important. I've talked to so many people about this and I've been ignored for a long time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Okay. Next is communications from the mayor. One such communication is a proclamation for the First Baptist Church Christian Service Center. And Councilman Gann is going to read that for us.
Whereas the Christian Service Center, a food and clothing ministry of First Baptist Church of Clinton is celebrating 35 years of service to the community. And whereas the great ministry serves over 2,000 people per year, providing over 80,000 food items and over 7,500 clothing items to those in need. And whereas each year, the ministry also provides approximately 500 holiday food baskets. And whereas the ministry would not be possible without faithful volunteers, some volunteering for over 30 years. Now therefore, the mayor and Clinton City Council do hereby honor and commend the First Baptist Church of Clinton Christian Service Center for their 35 years of service to our community and a special thank you to all the volunteers that make this ministry possible. Their dedication to our community is what makes the city of Clinton a special place to live. This proclamation adopted on the 25th, 25th day of April, 2022.
Thank you, sir. Next, committee reports. Ms. Johnson, Clinton C. School Board report.
Good evening. A couple of updates for Clinton City Schools. Today is such a fabulous day. I'm so happy that ET Stamey has joined back at City Council, our father of the Blaze. We're going to let him get oriented to City Council first and then he's going to start fundraising for the Blaze again because we need money, ET. So keep working hard, keep working hard. But lots going on in Clinton City Schools this week. We are finishing up TCAP testing this week, so we tested all last week. We'll be finishing up that this week. It has gone as well as standardized testing can go in elementary schools. We are going to be holding graduation on May 26. We're going to go back to faith promise again this year. We have grown to the point that we have to have two graduation ceremonies. So we will be doing North Clinton and South Clinton at 9 o'clock in the morning and then we will be doing Clinton Elementary at 11 o'clock in the morning. And then, believe it or not, May 27 will be our last day with students in the building. So this year has gone fast and furious for sure. We are back to normal at Clinton C. School, so field trips are back in action and so I'm getting flooded with field trips requests. We haven't done that in two years and so a lot is going to be happening in the month of May between our fire department cookouts and end of the year, end of the year field trips and our graduation and 6th grade environmental camp. So it's going to be a fast and furious month. As far as South Clinton goes, the walls are getting put up as we speak on both ends of the building, so you can kind of see the progress being made. We've run into a couple of snafus with supply chain demand that Scott Ray has eloquently worked through with the contractors, but we still anticipate that that will be open for the beginning of school in August. And then you all have to attest for me that in the past four to five months, ET, I promise I have given a Blaze update every single month in your honor. And so as far as Blaze activities goes, we have bowling and track happening right now. We are finishing up student bowling, which is so fabulous that the kids meet at the community center and they play, and they bowl. And so we are going to finish off that with a staff-student bowl-off. And so that's going to happen at the beginning of May and then we also have track going on. So lots of good things happening at Clinton City Schools. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Johnson? No ma'am, any financial stuff? That's okay.
I don't think anybody's ever used the word eloquent in my name in the same sense, but I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, fast. Moving on.
In your packets, you should have a memo for myself for budget amendment number five. I'll give you the summary of that. General Purpose School Fund, we're increasing appropriations by $1.1 million. That's a big one. The majority of that is our decision to start the South Clinton Elementary expansion. In our original budget, we had allocated those funds to prepay some debt. So in lieu of prepaying that debt, we're going to use that money to pay for the South Clinton Elementary expansion and not borrow any further funds. Federal Projects Fund is a very small amendment. Cafeteria Fund basically increases the requirements because the number of meals that we're serving have increased and our expenditures are directly correlated to the number of meals that we serve. USDA has granted every student a free breakfast and lunch regardless of need. So that was, of course, has increased the number of students that were serving breakfast and lunch and the expense that goes with that. So it'd be my recommendation that you approve budget amendment number five as presented.
Motion to approve budget amendment number five.
Salute.
Second? Motion and second, roll call please.
Okay, then it'd be my recommendation that you approve the budget amendment number five again? Yeah, if...
Have you changed it?
No, because this is dated, yeah, March 10th, so, yeah, I'm, I get to sit down. Sorry for wasting y'all's time.
As I said, we're very busy at Clinton City Schools today. It's okay.
You're right.
Okay.
Tell my husband that.
We'll move on to Clinton Regional Planning Commission, Councilman Gann.
The Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission met on April the 11th. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, applicant Paul Hopping requesting a right-side setback to six feet located at 106 Briarwood Road. There is already an existing pad there and he simply wanted to put a carport over it to give his car some protection and that was granted. Second applicant... Second applicant, skipping one here. Applicant Southern Fitness requesting left-side setback to eleven feet for property located at two thirty-five Hillvale Road. There is already currently a concrete pad there, so this would just simply extend the existing building over that concrete pad. And that was also granted. Applicant Kathy Melton requesting front-side yard setback to zero feet. Special exception for the use of public right-of-way for residential pool for property located at two oh four Riverside Drive. I know there's been a lot of discussion about this and we'll probably, I think, City Manager Hauck will be talking about this later. A front-side setback to ten feet was previously approved for an in-ground, for an above-ground pool on the property on July twelfth. It was constructed in error and the applicant is now requesting a zero-foot setback variance and a special exception for use of the public right-of-way. If granted, the special exception for the current property owner, current property owner only, the applicant must petition City Council for the use of public right-of-way. And after brief discussion, Mr. Crowley made the motion to approve the front setback to zero feet and special exception to the public right-of-way based on the willingness of the city to agree to the use of, avoid economic hardship and the variances of the minimal action needed to avoid practical difficulties. I will say in connection with this, part of what had to be done was, there was a part of the deck that extended and that part had to be removed. So it, there's kind of a, in-between, a concession there between the two to try to resolve that. Let me get to the others here. The Planning Commission. Applicant Greg Anderson requesting site plan review for Anderson Oral Surgery located at Frank Price Boulevard. This one had been previously approved. There were some minor changes in it, so once again, it was approved by the Planning Commission. Let's see. Barry Phillips requesting rezoning from R-one to R-three for the property located at South Main Street. Property is zoned R-two. Come to find out, there was a mistake in this. The property should have been zoned R-two, which did allow him to do what he wanted to. So there was no need for any rezoning at all since it was, when appropriately zoned, R-two and he could accomplish what he needed to do. Applicant Deanna Rhodes request, Willer Run Apartments, requesting site plan review for property located at five seventeen Douglas Lane. This is another complex such as, such as is already there at Willer Run. There were some stormwater issues and such. And once these have been cleared up, that was approved. And then William Underwood requesting final plat review for property located at four oh four Hickory Street. This is a minor plat redivision that needed some signatures and such. And once those were accomplished, that would be approved also. And we're also, I might say, we're also working on an ordinance for cell phone towers. That is something that is, a lot of cities are working on now because most of us never had anything in our codes enforcement to deal with cell phone towers. This is kind of a new development for all of us. Any questions?
Any questions for Councilman Gann? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kathy Melton, the Riverside Drive property owner.
Yes, ma'am.
I had one question, and I know this is, this has been a terrible mess, my fault. And I appreciate everybody working with me, but I have one question. I have, the deck came down this weekend, by the way, that part on Riverside. My insurer is gonna require fencing around that side because now that that deck and rail is gone, there's no barrier there. Even though Mr. Householder said at VZA that my pool is high enough that I'm not required to have a fence, is there anything I'm gonna be able to do? Because it will, on that one little corner, do you have a drawing? On that one little corner, it will go over the right-of-way.
It's down there on Riverside. It's on, right there, the San Fricker. It's under Riverside. Should be at one first.
Down there by the Green Bridge, which is not there anymore.
To allow?
Allow the fence. If we want to, we can go ahead and take care of this.
Okay, yeah, let's just go ahead and let you jump over to the city manager.
I'll kind of skip, Larry's already spoke about it. What we need to do is actually, in order for the pool to remain, it will be necessary to grant a user agreement to Ms. Melton for her exclusive use of the affected portion of the right-of-way. If granted, we would recommend this license be attached to the current property owner and not to the property. Otherwise, we'll grant it to her. So she sells the house. If anything happens to the pool, or she sells the house, the pool has to come down. Whereas if something happens to the pool, she can't replace it.
So what happened there, explain, you explained it to me earlier. You have a setback. We decreased the setback. But the setback starts where the right-of-way not up to the curb, basically. And by mistake, they went all the way to the curb or all the way to the road.
No, but they actually went.
They counted from the road back?
Actually, about, it's about five or six feet.
Okay, got it. So it was, it was a mistake that was made then to keep her from having to take it completely down.
She's still ten or twelve foot off the road, but she's a couple of feet.
The right-of-way on that stretch of road is.
Wide.
Way wide.
Okay. Allow her to stay while she's got. We're gonna amend it to where she can put the proper fencing up. But it only follows her. If she sells the house, if for some reason she moves the pool or changes the pool, this goes away.
Yes.
And I'm not getting any younger, so it might not be long.
We don't want to put an expiration date on it, so we'll leave it open.
Because I do have grandchildren that live with me.
We'll leave it open. That's good. Okay, any questions from council or we'll go ahead and vote on this? Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Councilman Gann, you are done now?
Well, let me, let me.
You got something? Go ahead.
Just share with everybody, Jazz on the Hill is, is continuing this summer. Lots of activities. There is a brand-new website for Green McAdoo, and it is, it is top drawer. If you haven't seen that, need to go on, online, there are lots of activities planned for this summer. So I'd encourage you to keep up with what's going on at Green McAdoo.
In your packet, you will see two or three reports from CUB. I think that was an error over the last couple of months, and those reports are there. If you have questions, write them down. We'll talk to Vice Mayor Fair next month. Any other board or committee reports? Okay, moving right along. General Government Report.
Took care of the right-of-way. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget, we'll be posting that by no later than Friday. It'll be posted on Dropbox, which we'll have first reading at the May, May meeting. Just a couple of things with it. We have proposed this year a four percent pay increase for city employees. That will be the highest pay increase since nineteen ninety-six. That was the last time employees were given four percent pay increase. Still paying one hundred percent of insurance. We are expecting a pretty big increase this year in insurance. And once again, that's pretty much, we consider a Cadillac plan, too. We did take a pretty good-sized hit in our budget last week, and I'm gonna let Gail explain it. Our equalization factor came in. We knew, we knew it would be a good one this year. The property assessor had been giving us that for the last couple of months. We had kind of planned on that when we started working on the budget. It just didn't, it didn't come in as well as what we thought. So we had to go back last minute last week and tweak the budget and get the numbers down to where we needed to to still, still be able to give a balanced budget with no tax increase. But I'll let Gail explain the equalization factor.
Basically, what the property assessor does by state law is it's a mechanism to equalize personal property and real property. And so our real property is looked at every five years. We go through our reappraisal. Personal property, on the other hand, is reported annually. So businesses report their property. So years and years ago, evidently, something got started in regards to, they felt like that they were looked at every year, whereas real property every five years or whatever the cycle was. So the State Board of Equalization goes through a process. They rotate it, I think it's every four years, every two years. And they, basically, it's a calculation of, based on real property of, so, in my mind, this is the way I understood it, is for instance, a hundred fifty thousand dollar house that's on the roll at a hundred fifty thousand dollars, they look at sales reports, and that hundred fifty thousand dollar home is now selling for two hundred five thousand, six hundred. That's creating, that division there is an equalization factor of point seven two nine five. That factor is then applied to all personal property and public utilities, which for us is a huge number. So basically, the tax roll for those two, two types of property, that percentage is applied to. So we're in essence, losing over twenty-five percent of that personal property this year. The same will happen next year. Then it will be looked at again. It's varying well. As a matter of fact, I talked to City of Oak Ridge. She doesn't, I had, I had records here going back to nineteen ninety-nine. It had never been higher than a point eight oh one or something. And normally, you don't see that until right before reappraisal. You don't see it this early, for sure. And, and City of Oak Ridge indicated she didn't ever remember it being this.
What is it again?
It's point seven two nine five. So I had been looking at more like a point eight five. So it's, it took some, some money out of our, our property tax estimates.
Which is about?
About four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in lost revenue.
Okay. I mean, there's nothing you can do about it. You just have to budget and plan around it.
I did talk to the state. He said it's gonna, as, as we know with the cost of housing, he said this is the standard across the state right now. He said ours was not the worst or the best, but he said it's, and I had asked, could we appeal the prop, the, the rate or contest it? He said the property assessor can appeal it, but he indicated it probably would not do any good. He didn't think we'd get very far with it.
So it's just one of those things. It's a good thing, done good budgeting and always have a rainy day fund because, I mean, things like this happen in your budget. So there have been times in the history of our city that would, not that it's not big, but there have been times it would have been real big and a real problem. But to have this and be able to raise and no tax increase, that's an indication of what we've tried to each and every month, be good stewards and staff, so. Okay?
You've got your sales tax report. We were up again this month. Year-to-date, we're almost at eleven percent increase. Little bit above what the county is at about seven and a half. So that ten percent increase for us, if we stay with that, is a little over four hundred thousand based on, on prior year. So that, there, it's a wash. We've collected about, I think you see we're at a little over ninety-nine percent of our budgeted revenue. So we're really doing good with our revenues there. Part of that is due to a little over one point six million and, you know, the, we've got the ARPA funds and the state has given us some, some money this year in regards to some direct appropriations. Our wholesale liquor, I'll mention that's one of our new ones. We're averaging, we've gotten three months in, the average is about twelve thousand. Don't know if that will, you know, obviously, there's stocking. That was our first month. So we'll, we'll see what that ends up being as we go forward. Our property tax collections are a little bit over ninety-six percent. So we've done very good in that. We look at, we think anything above ninety-five and we've, we've done a good job with that. So the staff has done a good job of tracking those down. And I'll mention the CUB. We received a letter today from the comptroller's office that they have been removed from oversight from the water, wastewater financing board. If you remember, if it's been two years or three years, that they've been under their oversight because of the way their financials reporting loss. So they have been pulled out from under that. So that's a good thing. That's all I have. Oh, budget amendment number seven. Again, we're just doing budget amendments in regards to capital outlay. So we've had some computer and then we've been purchasing some equipment for the police department. And then the third one there that we've got is where I am budgeting for one of the direct appropriations that we received from the state. I need to show an amendment specifically to that money. So I've rearranged where we took it out of and showing it coming from that grant revenue instead of fund balance.
Motion to approve budget amendment number seven?
So moved.
Second? Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey? Councilman Hackmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Fairmeyer?
Gail? Police Department reported that the funding allocated and kept out of the plan, we need to proceed with purchase of vehicles for the police department ordered to secure current model, year of vehicles and expedited delivery. We would therefore request authorization to proceed with the following purchase. Two new two thousand twenty-two model Dodge Charger police patrol vehicles at a total of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. The vehicles will be, be purchased from the Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram of Columbia, state contract pricing. These actually, we've had two vehicles in the last six months that have been hit by other people, not our fault. We had one hit about a month ago on North Seavers Boulevard and another one hit while it was parked in front of the police station. So I guess we're kind of replacing these. The good news is, we did receive thirty-eight thousand in insurance from the two insurance companies of those people. So we did get some of that money back and we, we have kept both vehicles to strip some of the equipment off of them.
Motion to purchase vehicles.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Only other thing I've got, couple activities. We've got this coming Saturday, Paul's for a college, JB, at the Dog Park in South Clinton. That's for the Maine Society. We got the fire department, police department basketball game, six o'clock at Clinton Elementary this Saturday. And then next Friday, Saturday, we have the Antique Festival on Market Street.
Catherine, I'd probably look over you. Do you wanna?
I was gonna mention her.
Yeah, come on up. I'm sorry.
Yes, and we have Touch a Truck at J.C. Park. I don't remember the times. Do you, JB? Tend to two at J.C. Park. That's a fundraiser that our employees are putting on for United Way.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I think the most important thing I have to say is, ET, I am so happy to see your smiling face right there because I promise you with all of these events that we've planned and the things that we've done now down in downtown, all I think is ET would love this. So I'm so happy that you're gonna be coming back to some of those things. I wanted to share some numbers with you guys. Our food trucks event has been going on for five weeks now. And we got all of the numbers from the food trucks on their sales. And Clinton has spent forty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars on food in five weeks in our downtown area. So if you estimate that to be twelve dollars a meal, that we are averaging about seven hundred and forty-one meals per week in downtown. So my hope is that that data is encouraging to you all, that we are working towards getting some more exciting things down there and hoping for some restaurants that wanna come and stay with us permanently here in Clinton. Our Mosaic event was on April ninth and it just did my heart so much good because I can now tell you that not snow, nor sleet, nor sun, nor wind will stop parents from coming to see their kids perform. I, I think most of you know that I grew up in this town and I love it so much, but I don't have any memories of festivals in downtown. But there are hundreds of kids that can now say that they have those memories down there. And I think that's one of the most important things that we offer as a Main Street program. And I hope that you guys see that as well. We do have our Spring Antique Festival. We do have our Spring Antique Festival coming up, or it's the fair in the spring. And that is May sixth and seventh. And we're going to have a beer garden on Friday night, thanks to you all. And we're going to have Handsome in the Humbles performing as well. Our walking tour, we're actually meeting on Thursday with our sign guy to make sure we have our placements correct. And I'm hoping that next time I stand before you guys, we can say that our walking tour is finished and finished and installed. And I hope that you guys will all take a little walk on Market Street because this past Thursday, we bought some flowers from Clinton High School and we went to Anderson County, Andrew, the Clinton Co-op and Pope's Nursery. So we spent all of our funds locally and we filled the huge baskets down there with flowers. And I'm telling you, they look so beautiful down there. So I'm really excited to see it. It's something that a lot of the bigger, small towns do just to kind of create that quaint, charming feel when people are down there shopping. So go take a look. That's all I have. I'm so glad you're back. And, and well, I did want to say also that you got a packet from us last month and it had some estimates on what cities donate to their Main Street programs. The average is about fifty thousand dollars. So as y'all are talking of the budget, just keep us in mind because we would appreciate anything that you guys can do to help support the programs and the goals that we have for our town of Clinton. Thank you. I got E.T.'s vote.
Anything else, Roger?
That's all I have, thank you.
Roger wanted to compliment the Park and Rex report, looks very good. JB might need to outline a few things for. It looks good.
Anything else from you? Okay, I think we're down to second and final reading of ordinance number six seventy-one regarding the temporary and non-residential accessory buildings. And basically, that's the pod-type buildings, is that right? And it limits how long those can be? Ninety days and they can request one additional extension of ninety days. Is that right? About the gist of it? Motion to approve second reading, ordinance six seventy-one.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Motion carries. Any old business? Any new business? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.